Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We appreciate all of you being here. Our meeting has already been called to order since council held the closed session at 6:00. So we reconvene from that closed session. And if someone would move to certify that closed session before we move forward, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we certify our closed session. And of course, with Section 2.2, 3711A, a one, created in Virginia, is amended to discuss personnel matters, in that we only discussed personnel matters back there in closing.
All right, so thank you. All right, appreciate it. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So if we would stand, we'll have our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the day. We give you thanks for the strength and the health that we all have here tonight. We ask that you would especially bless those who call Pecosin their home. We ask that you would join with us tonight and just be an inspiration to us tonight. And we ask, dear Lord, that you would join with us in our deliberations. And we pray that all that we decide here tonight, all that we do, will be in the best interest of those that we serve. We make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. First item on our agenda, we have a guest tonight, Mr. Dana Dickens, who is really no stranger to most of us here. Dana's the president of the Hampton Roads Partnership. He's become not only a good friend, but he does a super job with the partnership as well. And so Dana, welcome to the city of Pecosin, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's always a pleasure being in Pecosin. It's always a pleasure to be with you, sir, and thank you for your participation in the partnership and other regional activities, as well as those others of you who participate in regional activities. I'm here tonight to chat with you a little bit about a project that we've been working on for not quite a year. It is a comprehensive economic development strategy. We started on this project looking at it in reference to making the region eligible for economic development grants. You're familiar with it. They're primarily infrastructure grants, and nobody in the region at this point in time is eligible for them because we haven't done this comprehensive economic development strategy for EDA. So we started looking at it in that regard, and it didn't take us very long to figure out that this was what my mother used to call a "toofir." We had an opportunity to make the region eligible for economic development grants, but equally, well, in my point of view, more importantly, gave us an opportunity to look at the entire region, to develop that strategy that would make us more competitive as we move forward in this global economy. When we started organizing, we looked at the economy, did the SWOT analysis, the typical things, and very quickly recognized that there are three pillars of the existing economy in Hampton Roads. Federal spending, military and federal spending represents almost 45% of our economy. That's huge. There are very few economies anywhere in the country that have that big a dependence on one industry. And in the economic environment that we're in today, it's really wonderful because our unemployment is not as high as others. Our economy is doing a lot better than others. Just talked to a gentleman who came back from Detroit, and they're tearing down buildings and talking about turning downtown Detroit into green space. Things are really bad in other parts of the country. We're lucky there. The converse of that is that in a time that we probably are going to be approaching here shortly, when federal spending, military spending reduces, it puts us at great risk. A 10% reduction in federal spending will be a little bit over a billion-dollar hit to our economy. So it's a significant issue. Still, you know, I wouldn't trade it right now for anything in the country. Second pillar of the economy is the port. The third pillar is tourism. Obviously, they are the big part of our economy. And a number that caught me quite by surprise is that when you add the three of those together, and I'm not talking about direct jobs, I mean the spinoffs and all of the issues, we're approaching 75% of our economy is wrapped around those three industries. Again, it's a good thing for us because our economy is very stable, but it puts us in a situation where we need to start thinking about opportunities, if you will, to diversify our economy. And candidly, we've been thinking about that for a long time. The partnership was established on that as one of the principles, was to start looking at opportunities to diversify our economy. I think the partnership has done a good job of fostering diversification, but the military spending in the last 10 years has almost doubled in Hampton Roads. So I don't care how much growth we have in a smaller sector of our economy, we're not going to outpace that. Again, the fourth committee that we're talking about addresses what we are going to call a fourth pillar of our economy, and that's the opportunity to diversify our economy. There are a lot of things we're looking at. For example, modeling and simulation, which I think technology is a big piece of what goes on all over the region. Sensors is another technology area that is important to us. Offshore wind, alternative energy sources, offshore drilling sources, there's a big industry there. If you think about what happens in the Gulf Coast, the economies there are really tied to that offshore drilling industry, and it produces a lot of revenue for them. Would be a good opportunity for us with our shipbuilding, our ship repair, obviously, our proximity to wind energy off the coast and drilling opportunities off the coast. The medical industry is another one. It's a very growing industry. So we're looking at those and other opportunities to make our economy stronger. And what I would like to suggest to you is that if you look at Hampton Roads, and we are, the region is the economic unit, it's not individual cities and counties. If you look at the assets of this region, we are pretty darn strong. We've got a lot of wonderful assets that we can take out into the world and sell to people and try and encourage them to come back to Hampton Roads. But the one thing that we're really missing and the one great opportunity we have in this strategy that we put together is an opportunity to take all those assets and all these multiple organizations that we have in Hampton Roads and align them under a common set of goals and objectives. These goals and objectives being the three pillars plus opportunities to diversify from those pillars. An opportunity to align our region. And if we think about hitching all of our horses to one cart, our competitive position is going to be enhanced significantly. And what I'm here asking you to do tonight is when you develop your strategic plans and when you start thinking about, and I think what many of you will do is, I think we did when I was on council, is in the late summer and early fall, you start to do retreats and think about those kinds of things. What I would ask you to do is to keep in mind the regional strategy and see, and look at Pecosin's assets and align what you do in Pecosin with the broader picture. Obviously, not trying to tell you how to do your business or what you got to do, but we will be a lot stronger if Pecosin's assets are aligned up and working in the same direction as the other counties and cities, civic groups, nonprofits, all the organizations and people around Hampton Roads. So I encourage you to do that. I think we've done a pretty good job of putting this strategy together. I looked at a group that was about 15 people sitting around the table, and six of them were PhDs. So some pretty bright people have been participating in this thing. So I bring this to you tonight, Mr. Mayor and members of council, with a lot of encouragement and a lot of help with, from across the region. We'll start to align the assets of Hampton Roads and put ourselves in a lot more competitive position than we already are. And I would submit to you that we are competitive today. We're doing pretty good, particularly when you compare us to what's happening around the country. We're doing real good, so we can do better. And that's the opportunity that's laid in front of us, and I would hope that we can all take advantage of that. Mr. Mayor, I've been as brief as I can possibly. I've taken the years' worth of work.
You did a good job.
Put it in a short period of time. I'd be more than happy to talk about what, any questions or talk about whatever it is that you all would like to hear from me.
Any questions, Dana? Let me tell you what I like about Dana. And we've had this discussion before. Not only do you represent the region well, but you always understand that the city of Pecosin is going to take care of the city of Pecosin first. But he does everything that he possibly can do. In fact, we just talked about a project just a few minutes ago. He will do everything that he can do to watch us grow and watch us move forward. And I admire that about you, Dana. And it's not just in Pecosin, but it's throughout the region. He's a man of integrity, he's a man of honor, and he's become a good friend, not only to me, but to the city, and I appreciate it.
And I value that friendship. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Dana, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You, too. All righty, we'll move on to our audience for visitors. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council on any issue, we'd love to hear from you now. Anyone? Okay, let's move on then to the approval of our minutes. We have three sessions, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the regular session February 22nd.
Motion made second. We adopt our regular session minutes for February the 22nd, 2010. Concerns, comments, questions regarding those minutes?
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And the work session?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the work session of February 22nd, 2010.
Motion made second. We adopt the work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those minutes, any questions? Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, Judy, thank you. And the final one is our special session on February the 23rd.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the special session of February 23rd, 2010.
All right, sir. Motion made second, and we adopt those minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to unfinished business. One item, it's a second reading of the ordinance, amending the zoning ordinances. The topic was definition of height of building. Seems like to me this is kind of sailed through council at our last meeting, so I'm sure we need a lot of discussion, but we do need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, Section 1-3 definitions.
Okay. Motion made second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions since last time? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to new business. The first item is a resolution awarding a contract for pump station two and an ordinance appropriating funding for the same. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things to note for you first. This is a follow-on to your decision of several weeks ago to move forward with the pump station two capacity upgrades. Project remains on schedule. We met recently with the developers and potential developers in the area to let them know of the schedule as well, to make sure we're all informed as we go forward. The good news about this is it appears that the total project cost may be about 15% less than we thought. Because of the way that we worked to structure this debt, we have the option to immediately, without penalty, repay any monies we have remaining from the project budget. So that's good news. It's worth noting that Mr. Blemm, Mr. Speechley, and Mrs. Owens have worked hard to make this happen, and between those three, they will be the project management team going forward to make sure this project stays on schedule and does a good job.
Okay. Any questions to the manager?
Just one question.
Sure.
In the total dollar amount, is there a contingency for growth in there? Is there some growth money in that bid? Or do you want us to go straight with the, is this the low bid, and if there's growth, then we have to add to it?
Minor amendments can be approved at my level, and anything beyond $30,000 needs to come back here. This is fine the way it is.
Okay.
We don't believe we're going to need any additional council action, except when it's all done, we will ask your consent to pay back the principal.
You have what you need to go up to $30,000 above this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So only $30,000? Because, I mean, in the notes, it says, out of the $600,000, about $80,000 is left over.
That's correct. That's where $30,000 is coming from, right? Mr. Hunt's question was, do we need any, I believe, flexibility at the $450,000 range for minor change orders and other things? And I was simply pointing out that I think we've got...
You have enough flexibility.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure.
Good. And for the record, when is the pump station supposed to be up and operational?
September.
September 30th?
The last I saw was September the 12th. Am I remembering that right, Mr. Blemm?
180 days from notice to proceed.
Which puts us in September?
180 days from tomorrow.
From notice to proceed, which is intended at this point to be Monday, I believe.
Tuesday.
In the September. They have 180 days after notice to proceed. We intend to give them, assuming that you all vote for it, we'll give them notice to proceed tomorrow.
Good.
All right. And they'll work on it with it in service?
Correct.
Right.
Yes. The first thing they're going to have to do is start bypass, the first thing they're going to have to do is order some of the parts and start bypass pumping.
I ran by that pump station yesterday, and you can really smell it ways away. So it needs to be fixed soon.
It does. Okay. Okay, we got resolutions first?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we make a motion we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Shaw Construction for construction of pump station two capacity improvements.
All right, sir. Thank you. All right, we have motion made second, and we adopt the resolution. Any other comments, any other questions within staff or... Okay. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, Judy. And we have an ordinance as well?
Question on the ordinance. The ordinance stays the same as far as the amount, and you're going to pay, and then you would pay back what you talked about, Randy?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So immediately come off, not because of some, like, unappropriated fund balance, it would just go back towards the financing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance, making additional appropriations and re-appropriations for fiscal year 2009, 2010.
All right. All right. The motion made second, we adopt the ordinance as well. Any other comments, questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, Judy, thank you very much. The next item is on our agenda, is number two, is a resolution in memory of former Vice Mayor Arthur V. Banks Holloway, Jr.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution in honor of Arthur V. Banks Holloway, former Vice Mayor of the city of Pecosin.
Okay, we have a motion made second. We adopt the resolution, and we'll certainly look forward to presenting that resolution to Jackie and the family at a later date. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item three, is a resolution authorizing solicitation of bids for a permanent utility easement across property located on Pecosin Avenue. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this initiates the process leading to a decision to grant, or not to grant, an easement to junior power, to run power to the AT&amp;T cell tower at South Larson Park. This is the beginning of the process.
Okay. Are they going to start working?
Oh. You go ahead with the motion, and I'll ask a question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve a resolution of the council of the city of Pecosin directing the public notice be given to the council's intention to receive bids for permanent utility easement across city property located on Pecosin Avenue, known as TAC map parcel 21 TAC, 10 TAC 06, 21 TAC 1, TAC 123, 21 TAC 1, TAC 141, and 30 TAC, 1 TAC 117.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right, I think we have a motion made and one section until we adopt that resolution. Okay. I'm sorry, Carrie, yes, sir. Are they going to start working on that relatively soon? Do we know they are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I had a question. Where is this, that TAC map parcel, which part of Pecosin Avenue?
It's out South Larson Park. If you're coming...
Relatively across from, okay.
To the left of the pond. Am I right, Jeff? Am I orienting myself correctly?
Right of the pond.
To the right of the pond at South Larson Park.
All right. And how disruptive will this be to traffic? Will they just reroute traffic down Lodge and up Bunting for a while, or do they do this pretty quickly?
Run the power cord. It shouldn't disrupt traffic at all.
Oh, okay. Right.
Okay. Other questions? I think we have the motion made in second. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Item four in the new business is the Leyden Way, Little Florida Road, Pecosin Avenue intersection.
Mr. Mayor, several weeks ago, members of council had occasion to speak with the IDA, and one of the things that you spoke about was a mutual desire to move forward with the sale of the teen center property. There is a remaining issue relating to the teen center that we would ask your direction on, and that pertains to the future intersection improvements there, at the intersection of Pecosin Avenue, Little Florida, and Leyden Way. This is something that the city council has seen previously, a report from Kublins. I'm pleased to tell you that we have, one, possibly two, potential offers on that property, and when we get your direction, we'll know exactly what the remainder of the parcel will be like, we'll work with the IDA to price it, and formally respond to the offers that we've gotten so far, which should happen as quickly as this week.
Okay.
Mr. Blemm is here to briefly summarize the three options, as you've seen them, and to talk about the recommendation study, and will answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Evening, Mayor Helsel.
Morning, sir.
Honorable members of council.
Evening, sir.
You're, probably familiar with, I'm sure you're well familiar with the intersection as it is now. One of the things I would point out that's not readily obvious is that the northern portion of the intersection, if you're coming up Pecosin Avenue from the schools going up towards the old municipal building, on the right-hand side of the road, in that turn, there are three driveway entrances. That's not readily noticeable from that. You can see in the drawing of the aerial photo here, that Pecosin Avenue comes up from the east and goes to the northwest. Just past that intersection, Leyden Way goes off to the south, and Little Florida Road continues on. If you zoom in on that a little bit, you see there is the intersection, and, does that show up on a... Yeah, it does. Okay. Up in here are the three driveway entrances that I'm, there's one here and two in this vicinity that I'm speaking of. Of course, this is Pecosin Avenue with a right turn lane. What I call a high-speed turnoff, what we call a high-speed turnoff in the Air Force, if you're pulling off a runway, instead of making a 90-degree turn, they have a thing that kind of goes off so you don't have to slow down so much. And, I lost my little, there it is. And Little Florida Road going off to the west, and Leyden Way coming down to the south. In a sketch that looks like this, with, again, Pecosin Avenue coming from the west, going up to the north, coming from the east going to the northwest, Little Florida Road going to the west, and Leyden Way going to the south. And as you know, the old Knights of Pythias building is the property we own, which is in this area right here, in the southeast corner. Kublins Transportation Group did, for the city, come up with three, they did an analysis, they came up with three alternatives, and the first alternative was to basically move Leyden Way to the east slightly, and that's about it, to try to get a better alignment with the Pecosin Avenue, four-legged, to make that a nice four-legged intersection. They used the, somehow I jumped there. This, again, is the property that the city owns, that likely possibly sell if possible. The second alternative was also a four-legged intersection, and that moved Leyden Way, again, to the east a little bit, and it moved Pecosin Avenue to the west. And instead of having that high-speed, what I call a high-speed turnoff or gradual right turn on Pecosin Avenue, they suggested adding a right turn lane and making that more closely to a 90-degree turn. And the third alternative was to put in a traffic circle, Colson, or traffic circle, And they didn't like this alternative for several reasons. One is it does impact the people on this northern section where the driveways are. It also has the most impervious. It costs the most, uses up the most space, but it does provide something in the center there for a focal point of some sort. And the recommended alternative was a combination of these, and I apologize for not having a better slide. And then what this shows that, that they didn't recommend was they, they recommended actually taking out this high-speed lane and making, adding a right turn lane so that one would come up and turn right there. The reason for that is for, one of the things they were very concerned about during the thing was pedestrians and bicyclists. And there's a lot of places for pedestrians to go around there, specifically the schools. And therefore, they thought that it's very important to, to keep those people in mind. And by having it the way it is shown here, you have more crossings that you'd have to cross to the center island and cross back over here. If you just had a right turn lane, it'd be one crossing this way, one crossing this way, one crossing that way, another crossing that way. That was their opinion. That seemed to, was the least expensive alternative, and it used up the least amount of property. As far as using property, it does use up approximately a tenth of an acre over on this corner of our, the, was presently city-owned property, and a little piece of the corner across the catty corner from, from that. We, now, we, none of the, we have not done, nor did Kublins do any boundary surveys, and we don't have specific construction drawings, so I can't tell you the, the exact number of square feet and exactly where the lines ought to go. But that's pretty much it in a nutshell, and I'll be quiet from here on out unless you have any questions.
Okay, questions, Jeff? I, I guess, overall, I'd be interested in the, the different alternatives. What is the impact on private land? Do any of these alternatives take some private land or require private land?
Yes, all three of them do. This one, the recommended alternative, takes the least amount.
I had a question, too. It looks to me that alternative three with the roundabout was problematic. It looks to me like they were trying to save the building that is now, I think, I don't know if we've condemned it, or it's unusable. So now that that building is no longer really a factor, could the roundabout be moved south a little bit to make, make it easier? And that way you wouldn't affect the properties on the north side?
Yes, it probably could, but any way you look at it, that takes up the most space, the roundabout does, uses the most space. And it has the most impervious, which we're concerned about because of stormwater runoff. More impervious surface, you have to have more drainage.
You could slip that roundabout, oh, south, southeast. As Tracy was saying, and get it off private property on the city property.
Well, it looks like.
Like about one, two, zero degrees down there.
Right.
And put the whole thing on the Knights of Pithias property, property?
Well, just slip it off the private property. What'd you say, it was ten or twelve feet or something like that? Just slip it down ten or twelve feet, would that work?
I, I don't know, I don't think that it, it might work. Another problem with this particular alternative is at the, the northern portion of the roundabout, you have those three driveways.
Yeah.
And this impact, has the greatest impact on those three, those three property owners.
That's what we're saying.
Where you've got it wrong.
You shifted down.
The way it is now, correct.
All right. Kublins, Kublins did not address signalization of this T-Doff intersection.
I'm sorry, Jerry.
They did not address signalization of this T-Doff intersection.
That's correct.
We are assuming that this intersection, if we improved it, it would not have to have a signal?
That's correct. The, um, there's, they, they discussed it with the police chief, and I have, and right now, and the city, previous city manager. Right now, there's, it's, it's, there are some accidents, not many. Not many because there's not a high volume of traffic going through there, and it's not very high speed. There's no anticipation of a great anticipation, a great amount of development south of that. We don't expect a lot more traffic to be coming through there in the future. In other words, the traffic that's coming through there now is about what's coming through there. The, the lower portion of the city is pretty well developed as far, because of environmental regulations, wetlands. Hopefully, there'll be some more development.
I share that concern also, that, that at some point, we might have to put a traffic light in there if we, if we change something. And I'd rather not have a traffic light. Is there, you said you talked with the chief of police, I guess that'd be Cliff, but isn't it more in the VDOT area? Aren't they the ones who have the jurisdiction over that type of thing?
VDOT pays for our roads, they'll construct some of the big ones. They want us to build roads to their standards.
Right.
But when, when there's anything to question about traffic or accidents, they come to us and say, what's your traffic? How many accidents have you had? They don't, they don't keep that.
I guess here's one, here's what I heard you say. Right now, Little Florida Road, and even the exit off of it, coming from the eastern district, is kind of set up on high, two high-speed turns. Right? You've got one high-speed turn to the right, and for those of us that sit on Pecoson Avenue there, going to school through a twenty-five mile an hour zone, the average speed through there is probably greater than that. And the main reason for the, the thought of, when Kublins brought this to us a few years ago, was that the roundabout would actually slow traffic by design. And therefore, it would be more controllable there, and as well during events at the middle school, that the intersection would work without need for signalization or a guard.
I thought there's also from Kublins, I thought there was two different kinds of, two different sizes of roundabouts.
There were.
A smaller one would make the speed even less, I thought. I can't remember going back to, you know, it's a few years ago. But the roundabout, I thought Kublins talked about a traffic light down there, and the cost was significantly less to have a roundabout than it was to have a traffic light installed.
I think it was a break even.
Was it a break even?
Yeah, but.
If I lived there, I wouldn't want the flash, the flashing traffic light.
Well, some of the concern was, if you have a light coming off of Leyden Way, which isn't that heavily traffic, you know, heavy, heavily going, you get the red going, you know, on Pecoson Avenue, Little Florida, whatever, people are gonna sit there.
Yeah. I don't want traffic lights, because the vast majority of the time, you don't need them around here.
Exactly.
And they're just a pain in, a pain most of the time.
The Kublins' final report did not address traffic lights.
Right.
And, and one other thing that was implicit in my question about, isn't VDOT the one holding the cards, is, I'm assuming that the city of Pecoson is not gonna pay for this. I mean, we're gonna get money from VDOT to do this, correct?
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
Meaning that the state construction money is, is dropping every year, so.
We would put in for it.
Well, we'd put in for it. I mean, so we're gonna put in for it, but if, with our budget situation right now, I don't see the city of Pecoson footing a hundred percent of this bill.
I agree. I agree. And I think, trying to get us back to where I thought we, the only reason you wanted to see this tonight is, what do we see as the most likely path we would go, so that you can figure out how to work with the potential sale of that property?
Yes, sir.
Is there a question of the size of that, that property? I mean, if we do the roundabout, we lose, how much do we lose after the property?
In the report, they did not, Kublins' report did not address those. However, when, they did address it subjectively, and what they said was, in the roundabout, you, you lose the most. Now, objectively, I looked at, since they recommended the four-legged intersection, modified four-legged intersection as a kind of a combination of the first two that they discussed, I, since they recommended that, that's what I went and looked at to see about how much land that would use up. And that would use up approximately a tenth of an acre. The property is now about a little over nine tenths of an acre. So that would leave us over eight tenths of an acre to, you know, to be developed.
Does moving in that direction cause us a problem, Randy, in terms of the-
Not at all.
Sale of the property?
Just wanted to, to be clear, it may be ten years before we, we build this. This isn't something that we're planning to do eminently. But we wanted to make sure that we were reserving the right amount of property, so that whatever the city council wanted to do when it was time, we didn't have to go back and actually condemn the property we used to own.
Right.
If the council is desirous of maintaining the land area associated with the roundabout, even if in the future, you may decide to do something less, that, that is very instructive for us. And if you would like us further to see what could be done without spending a, a great deal of money, because we don't have it, to sort of push it a little bit more onto our property, we can certainly do that. That, what that probably does, and I'm speaking a little bit off the cuff, that probably sets us up for the potential subdivision of one residential lot on that property at this point, and then we wait and see on the other piece. Because I think, you know, if you look south on that map, that, the bottom part of that would set up, would set up good for that.
Yeah, I'd like to see what it looks like if you moved it southeast far enough to get it off of those three houses on the north side.
So the, the roundabout is, what I'm hearing is, is the roundabout is certainly the consideration of getting, getting it off of the private property, which I don't have a jut to do at all.
Right.
And I think that's the direction that we, that we want to go. Is that, is that, okay? Okay?
Understood.
All right. All right, sir. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay. Randy, you got some comments?
Just a few, sir.
Okay.
Of course, specifically. At your request, I extended an invitation to the school board to meet with you in joint session to discuss the school budget and the budget generally for the upcoming year. The school board has indicated that the twelfth would not work for them, and I'm looking for direction from you with regard to an additional date or dates. One obvious one that comes to mind is to combine that any longer work session evening for the twenty-sixth of April. But if there are other dates that the council would prefer, if you could let me know what those are, and I'll work with the superintendent to make this meeting happen.
Okay.
You want to talk about it now?
Now, or whenever?
I don't, I can't, I can't give you a date tonight, I can look and see what's beyond that.
I mean, beyond that, I would-
Well, unless you want to do it at a work session prior to the meeting.
I was gonna say, if we, if we have any type of special session between now and then, you may look to combine that.
It works for me. Okay.
Okay.
Got to be all right with everybody?
I think we may have opportunity to have a special session, I'm not sure, but.
I have no preference.
Okay. Tracy, all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Heads are going up and down, Randy.
Okay.
Okay.
Second, in the manager's memo, we had put, for your consideration, no decision required, opposed changes to the zoning ordinance pertaining to non-conforming commercial buildings. Wayne and I spoke right before your meeting, and actually Wayne identified a couple of additional changes in the area, specifically three point six, that were not as part of the, the change we were doing, but we may want to go ahead and, and do it all at one time. So if it's okay with you, my permission to sort of take this back, rework it, bring it to you.
Sure.
So that we only have to do one ordinance amendment rather than, than two.
Sure.
Good.
Two other things. In order to facilitate tonight's closed session, we needed to, to cancel and reschedule the Messick Point work session. This is one that we certainly need to have, and has been bumped at least two times on our agenda. And might I suggest that we start your evening at your next meeting at five rather than six, and take that up.
I'd like to be there for that one, because I have some ideas about Messick and somebody I've been dealing with, and I will be-
You're gonna be out of town, right?
I'm gonna be out of town, if we could. I have been talking with somebody who's interested in that area.
What is it, what's the next date?
We can have it to the twelfth, if you'd like.
Twelfth?
Twelfth'd be good.
April twelfth?
I'm gonna be gone April twelfth, but that's okay.
You sure?
I'm sure both, I'm gonna be gone.
Be gone and whatever the other one is.
Lastly, sir, I just wanted to report, today we had our expert interview with the FEMA and VDM representatives pertaining to the November nor'easter. They gave us a very good report in terms of not only what we did, but the record-keeping that we did associated with it. Several people had a role in that, but, but none had a bigger role than, than Robin Bellamy and Pam Thillman, so I wanted to just recognize them, through their efforts and the efforts of everyone associated, we stand to get back about two-hundred-and-seventy-five to two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in the direct expenses that we had to outlay in the month of November and associated with November, that were above and beyond what would have normal, our normal expenses would have been. So through their efforts, the city will recoup more than a quarter of a million dollars.
Good deal.
Is that close to a hundred percent expenditure, or? It's eighty-five percent.
Okay.
That's all I-
All right, Mr. Crawford?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Tom?
Just one thing, and that is, I noted that two of the people in the Board of Zoning Appeals are signing up for the certification program, which is really good. I'd like to commend them for that, because that certification program runs over a four-month period and is, is a lot of weekends and time away. And that's just an example of what the people in our boards do as, as far as public service and all, so that's to be commended. That's it.
All right, sir, thank you. Kerry?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Okay. Gene?
Let me get one thing, Mr. Mayor, that is, you know, Randy and staff have put a tremendous amount of information at our fingertips, dealing with the upcoming budget. And basically, as you, as you read through the several sheets, which are, are fairly simple and fairly well laid out, they lay out into something that I think that we should consider a direct mailing to our citizens. It's, it's a different budget year for us, it's a different budget year for the state. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, because we all are up against the multiple challenges. I know the governor's up against the challenge, but the localities are up as, just as extreme a challenge of revenue generation as the state is. We will have to certainly come up to the table to meet somewhere in the middle of what the governor does not fund, or the General Assembly, I shouldn't just say the governor. So with that said, I think that to make sure that our citizens know basically where the city is, before the budget comes out from the General Assembly, I think is good planning on our part to make sure that our citizens are the best informed in the state as to what's coming and what's gonna, how it's going to affect them. I don't want any surprises, there really shouldn't be that many surprises, I know there's a lot of churn out there. But the city's budget numbers speak for themselves from two thousand eight to two thousand ten. I think that we owe it to our citizens to let them know where they are, and what each of the three different budgets that are out there look like, and I'm sure it'll be negotiated somewhere between the three. But I would like to see us, as a council, back basically, hey, let's, let's groom this information and get it out on a direct mailing, so that everybody can see it. That's just my plea to other members of council.
Do you know, I was just gonna ask, do you not think that something on the internet would serve us as well?
No, I think a piece of paper in their hands would serve us fine. I think it's six hundred dollars in postage well spent. I mean, we can put it on the internet as well. But do I think that people are going to take the extra time to go there? I think this kind of speaks for itself, it shows a lot of dramatic trend. Most importantly, it shows a trend in education, which I think is important to everybody in Pecoson. So I would like to see us take the high road and make sure we have the most informed citizens before we start our process as to where we stand today.
And, and you know, our process is going to be extremely difficult. In talking with Senator Miller on Friday, I don't think things have gotten that much better over the past week and a half. My, my real concern is, and I have no problem, Gene, with what you want to do, what this council wants to do, but, you know, I'm, I'm very much concerned about the integrity of our school system, I really am. I, I had a letter this past week from, from a, from a citizen that indicated that, you know, they needed to know more about our budget. And while I know it is on the internet, while I know that every member of this council, you know, has a telephone and certainly willing to talk to any citizen, point's well taken, any, any way that we can, can kind of prepare this community for what's coming down the road. Many, many folks are here today, some are on this council, that are here because of our school system. And not that anything else takes second place, I don't, I don't mean that. We have a lot of, a lot of folks to fund, and a lot of, a lot of issues to deal with, but I think our educational system is probably the most important. And I think it's threatened, at least the first time since I've been on this council, it is threatened in a real and alive way. And there, there're gonna be some critical decisions that have to be, that have to be made, and, you know, we're gonna have to be up to the, we're gonna have, have enough strength and some courage to be able to, to make the decisions that we've been called on to make. But I certainly have no problem sending, you know, a mailer and letting people know where we are and indicate on there, you know, please, tell us, tell us what you think. Because we really need to know. You know, seven of us are gonna make some, some pretty critical decisions, and I would certainly like to have support of the community when we make those. Tom?
Yeah, I, I certainly agree with a, a direct mailing and, and sending information out. I think it would be good to wait until things become a little clearer at the state level, because the, the state revenues and spending are mismatched by eleven percent. And what they're trying to figure out is who to give the pain to, and how much to use budget gimmicks to, you know, push out into the future by not funding pensions and things like that. And so we really aren't gonna know, I mean, there, there's three things out there, we're not gonna know how much pain there is. I'd like to see it get a little more settled, maybe the three ways is to do it, as Gene suggests, because that, that hopefully, you know, puts the boundaries on it. But one other thing I would like to see very much, and I've talked to some people about this, is also when we put something out for the citizens, let them know that this is not a one-and-done problem. It's eleven percent cut this year, eleven percent deficit this year that has to be handled. They're gonna do some of it through budget gimmicks, but it's gonna be, they're gonna be, be able to do less budget gimmicks next year, and then what they're projecting for the next two years after that is an additional four percent for a total of a fifteen percent reduction. And so I think the citizens need to know, from our perspective, what it looks like for the next couple of years, not just this year. And, and so put a multi-year type of, of picture out there.
Do you think you can handle that in, in-
Yes, sir.
-agreement? And that's, all those are great and welcome things, I'm just trying to say that I want our citizens- just trying to say that I want our citizens to have the information at their disposal, what it really means, and what we really spend as a city, so that we don't end up dealing with rumor, instead of, hey, you have the information, you can kind of get it. You know, you may not keep it, there's, I'm sure, certain people in the community that would, that won't pay a lot of attention to it, there are others that will. And I think we owe it to everybody to say, here's the information that we understand today, so...
Good idea.
I'd be pleased to do that.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
No, it's a great idea, Gene, I agree, and I don't think in the next couple of weeks it's gonna change that much from a, from a state standpoint, I mean, whether it be ten percent, thirteen percent, it's still gonna be a, a hit.
I like the three scenarios that, you've kind of got the three scenarios, and now all you gotta do is wrap it up. It's gonna be somewhere in the middle, we hope.
Maybe.
And if nothing, maybe we won't get lucky and it's better, but at least we've let them know what's the worst case.
You'll take care of it? Question for the city manager, I've had a couple of people who walk with Creek Road, and they've commented about the outlet boxes that are down by the trees, you know, as you walk along there, how some of them are broken, whatever, and I made the comment that at one time, we were gonna take all those trees out and replace them with the, you know, the streetlights. And I don't know whether that's still a long-range plan, or is it still thinking about it? The second one was that, you know, they said, well, you ought to replace them, and I'm thinking, well, if we did something like that now, people who break them, or have in the past broke them, have up until Christmas time to break them again, and we'd have to go back and replace, and replace them all over again, if we use those trees for lights anymore. I mean, I don't know what we'd do with those trees, whether we have lights on them, I can't remember from last Christmas.
They didn't end up with too many lights on them.
They have a whole lot going on after that Christmas time.
They've gotten so, they've gotten so large that I don't think the staff can get...
I know. The Exchange Club, for years, you know, had, had the bulbs up there on the trees, but like you said...
They're out of control.
It got too tall for us, so, I don't know what, you know, whether we just keep them as they are now until later, or, or, even, even what it costs, Randy.
The, the long-term plan for streetlights, I don't think that's changed, but, but obviously in the short run, we don't have any money for that. But what we do have right now is some light boxes which are, which are tore up and could actually represent, they either need, in my opinion, need to be fixed up or removed, and I'm not sure that we're ready as a city to remove them, so we're taking, we're taking bids right now, in fact, or seeking quotes to repair those light boxes and put them in a little hardier sort of build than what they were before, which was really not designed for the wear and tear that they've gotten.
It's just a basic outdoor...
Lawn mowers that take them out, Randy, or...
It could be lawn mowers, it could be anything. So what we're gonna do is, we're, we're seeking that now, if it's, if it's money that we can do within budget, and I expect it, we will be, we'll handle it with the buildings and ground money that we have, but if it's more than that, we'll come back to this council and ask you how you'd like to proceed.
Can we not just flip the circuit breaker for no cost?
You mean, turn them off when they're not...
Turn the outlet, yeah, just, yeah, turn the outlets off.
Absolutely.
If it's a safety hazard.
It's, it's not an electrical safety hazard, it's, it's just a trip hazard, or, it's, it's just, you know, it's just not something you want kids running around.
Any kind of a box on top would be a trip, a trip hazard, too.
My kids, uh, my kids still swing around trees.
Oh, okay.
And certainly, certainly, we saw that at the Christmas parade, the, the trees are actually a pretty positive, popular base for families to put their trees under, or, excuse me, their chairs under, so we'll, we'll fix it, and if it's beyond our means, we'll come back to you and ask for direction.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you, Frank. Anything else?
Nothing else, sir.
Anybody? Okay, do you remember the motion, Joe?
Sound moved.
Okay.
Second.
Please. Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman. Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Halsell.
Aye.
Motion carried, vote is six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am, and we all adjourned.